Welcome everyone to the Kent City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. This is a remote meeting due to the coronavirus emergency and by order of the governor. So, welcome to anyone that is joining us on Kent TV 21, our Facebook page, the YouTube channel, and anyone that is dialing in to listen today. We have a couple of things on our agenda, so we are going to go ahead and get started. And the first item is the 2022 South King Housing Homeless Partners Work Plan and Budget Update, which is better known as SKIPs. So Marina, will you be starting us off tonight?
We are, I know we're kind of short on time, so I'm just going to go ahead and let Angela jump right in. You guys have all met her before, so I'm going to turn it straight over to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome Angela.
Thank you so much. I apologize. Tonight, I'm just going to be a voice. Good evening, council members. I am having some technical difficulties with my video. It'd be great to see you all and face to the name, but I have met you all before. It's really a pleasure to be here again. I am going to go through a brief update on SKIP, South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. I'm going to be reviewing the SKIP mission and objectives, as well as provide an update on our 2020 and 2021 work plan, and then discuss and get your feedback on our 2022 SKIP work plan. So I really wanted to provide an opportunity for all of our SKIP Partner Councils to get to provide feedback on that 2022 work plan. We really are in the development stages of that work plan, and it's really important for us to hear from each of our SKIP partners during that process. So just as a reminder, and I'll talk through this in terms of the process, but the budget as well as the work plan will come back to all of our council members, each of our Partner Councils later this summer for your formal adoption. So this is really an update and opportunity for feedback. Next slide is a draft SKIP mission. So this is in draft form because it hasn't been formally adopted by our Executive Board, but we are 10 South King County jurisdictions working together and sharing resources to create a coordinated and comprehensive approach to increasing housing stability and producing and preserving quality affordable housing in South King County. So this, the intention is really for our mission to be concise and specific, as well as convey SKIP's purpose and values. That really guides our work plan process, as well as the next slide, which outlines three SKIP objectives. These are to share technical information and resources that promote sound housing policy throughout the South King County subregion. Also to coordinate public resources that will leverage and attract greater private and public investment into affordable housing in South King County. And then thirdly, provide a unified voice to advocate for South King County needs at a local and regional level. The next slide is an overview of our reoccurring annual work plan items. So these are things that we will do every year. You'll see them again and again in our work plan. So they're broken up into three key areas here. Governance and administration, that really is thinking about our work plan process that we're doing now. Budgeting, quarterly progress reports, also providing some updates to housing stakeholders, as well as our non-SKIP Partner Cities about the work that we're doing. Policy and planning really gets into some of that funding support that I talked a little bit about, advocating for philanthropic, as well as other private investment. And then supporting policies and strategies for our South King County Partner jurisdictions when it comes to housing strategies, addressing displacement, thinking about healthy and fair housing. And then also supporting policies and strategies that embed and track racial equity. And then lastly, we've got a pretty big body of work here around outreach and education. So this includes representing SKIP at local and regional meetings and forums, as well as educational topics for our SKIP Executive Board, other educational opportunities that we partner with, housing stakeholder groups and advocacy organizations for broader education for elected officials, stakeholder groups, community members, and staff. And then each year, we also adopt state and federal legislative priorities, which helps us with our advocacy piece for South King County. And then we also convene the South King County Joint Planners and Developers Group. It's a space for our local government staff to engage with housing developers across the region and talk through strategies and ideas for housing programs and policies. Next slide. This is our 2020-2021 work plan review. This is a pretty quick review of our work plan, but this gives you an idea of some of our areas of ongoing focus this year. We are working on establishing a SKIP Advisory Board. Exciting to announce, we just launched recruitment and application process last week for that Advisory Board, and we'll be looking to bring them onboard this summer to really ground Executive Board decisions in the community needs and interests across South King County. We're also establishing the administrative plan and structure for a housing capital fund. So we have pooled public resources from sales tax credit revenues specifically for affordable housing. So that is where our SKIP Housing Capital Fund is really beginning, and we're going through and developing the priority and planning structure for that housing capital fund. Also, a key item for us is establishing a SKIP 501(c)(3). This is helping to build that funding support. We have a lot of philanthropic organizations and private corporations interested in affordable housing and interested in investing in South King County, but we do need that 501(c)(3) status for eligibility of a lot of those funds. So we are currently under development of a 501(c)(3). We're also working with that South King County Joint Planners and Developers Group to better understand the barriers across the region for increasing housing construction and preservation of affordable housing. We've established a subgroup of that initial work group to kind of tackle this topic and come up with some strategies that that group can implement over this year. And we're also working on inventorying and assessing existing preservation programs for affordable rent or in ownership housing. So this is really a way for us to collaborate and coordinate amongst jurisdictions and see what is being implemented across the region in different areas and where we're having success. The next slide is areas in need of attention. So this is really items that are in our 2020-2021 work plan that we need to further scope and are planned to begin later this year. Likely, we'll see some of these carry over into the 2022 work plan. So we have identified this first one, inventorying naturally occurring affordable housing that's vulnerable to market pressures. So this is outside of regular subsidized affordable housing. We have a pretty large housing stock in South King County that's considered naturally affordable, so there is no regulation on it. And getting a better understanding of what that housing stock really looks like and how much we actually have will help us to better create policies and strategies for preserving that housing stock. We also have in our work plan that came out of some of our subregional housing needs assessment work that we did is developing examples of potential design standard and desired requirements. So this body of work is really working with the South King County planners, long-range planners about implementation of their housing action plans and how SKIP can support that work at a regional level. And then we're also working with some of our partner organizations, developing affordable housing and homelessness awareness presentation toolkit. The beginning of this work, some of you may have seen, was last week with a webinar for Housing Development Consortium's Affordable Housing Week on permanent supportive housing. And we'll be working with some of those same stakeholder groups to develop more tools for better understanding both permanent supportive housing, as well as homelessness in affordable housing. Next slide is an overview of our work plan and budget process. So as I mentioned at the beginning, the end of this is really the adoption by our SKIP partners later this summer or early fall. And we're currently in this second stage, the outreach and update to our Partner Councils. And our SKIP Executive Board will be developing and working through some budget scenarios at their May and June Executive Board meetings. The last slide is some initial budget priorities and work plan priorities that were identified by our SKIP Staff Work Group, and we did some initial discussion with our Executive Board in April. So in terms of our budget, the first budget priority is working towards a balanced budget that includes two full-time positions. So currently, my position as the Executive Manager is full-time, and we have a second three-quarter time position of a program coordinator. But we'd like to look towards having two full-time positions that can better support the work that we're doing. We also, as we work on implementing our Advisory Board, included in our Advisory Board structure is a goal to develop and look at what it would take to provide a compensation structure for that Advisory Board. That's not currently in our budget, but we'd like to look at what that would entail in order to really recognize the expertise and the different level of engagement and opportunity that that would bring forward for Advisory Board members in the future. And that's really a best practice equity principle is compensating Advisory Board members. And then in terms of our work plan, I went over that review with you. We'll be continuing. Many of the items that I went over are ongoing action items that we'll build upon within our 2022 work plan. Also, working on that inventory of naturally occurring affordable housing will help us to develop strategies to preserve existing affordable housing stock that remains a really high priority. Also, thinking about our educational opportunities, both for our Executive Board, as well as our greater South King County stakeholders, staff members, and other organizations to really better understand the connections between SKIP's mission around affordable housing and how that impacts and is related to homelessness services, outreach, and best practices. So really helping to understand a little bit better connection there. And then ensuring that our monthly SKIP Executive Board educational items are strategically tied to our work plan. So the idea is that they really are staying on top of emerging issues, being kept informed of all of these things as we work through our work plan, and they're tied to the work that we're doing. And then the last item here is engaging in strategic planning. So we go through an annual budget and work plan process, and that is required by our inter-local agreement. But what we would like to do is to really think about strategically about our three-to-five-year goals and objectives that will help us to to better reach our goals, as well as to be a little bit strategic about where we're going for the future. It will also make each of these annual budget and work plan processes a little bit easier as we work to achieve those long-term goals. And the last slide is just my contact info. If you don't have it already, encourage you to reach out if you do have follow-up questions or any feedback that we don't get to tonight. With that, I will open it up for questions and turn it back over to Council President.
Thank you, Angela. Really good information. Anyone have any questions? Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Angela. Would you tell us the makeup of the Advisory Board, the structure, where people are coming from? I'm sure you'll have X number from this city or X number in this field. How is that comprised and what criteria can you tell us?
Yeah, absolutely. I would be happy also to share, if you're interested, our Executive Board resolution that kind of goes through this whole structure. But definitely, one thing that you touched on, Councilmember, is having representation across the region. So that is a priority there, is that we have representation from all of our SKIP Partner areas in terms of the geography, but also making sure that they have a connection to South King County. So they live in South King County, they work in South King County, or they have some really direct connection to our subregion, as well as thinking about having that kind of equal geographic representation. We also are looking for expertise in certain areas. So we've got outlined to have affordable housing and nonprofit housing developers, as well as folks with experience with affordable housing finance. So thinking about that finance side and putting together funding packages, which become a very complicated process with affordable housing. We also have an area identified for people experienced with housing instability and homelessness, as well as tenant rights and education. And then, let's see, I don't have it in front of me, but I should pull it up. I think I've got through most of those. And then an overarching goal of ours is also to represent the communities of South King County. So, South King County is one of the most diverse regions in the area, and we want to see that representation in our Advisory Board as well, which means having almost 50%, right, about 50% of our Advisory Board, the goal would be to have Black, Indigenous, or people of color representation on that group. It is a goal of ours, and we want to prioritize that. And part of this will be who applies and how good our outreach and recruitment process is as well. But I'm happy to share that full structure with you, if that's of interest.
It is of interest. Thank you. And you mentioned people with the experience of homelessness and housing. Would that be actual lived experience, lived experience as far as there will be folks who were previously unsheltered? And how many seats would that be?
Yeah, thank you for that question. At this point, we are, because we don't have a compensation structure, we've looked into some of these best practices around really getting individuals that are experiencing homelessness or are currently experiencing housing instability. And the recommendation has been that it requires a lot more resources and capacity than we have at this point. So we're targeting folks that are more professionally engaged with community-based organizations, nonprofit organizations, or service providers in this area at this time. And then hoping to use our Advisory Board to tap into and develop additional engagement strategies with regard to, you know, specific housing programs or strategies where we really would benefit from hearing from those with individual lived experiences as well. But at this time, our staff capacity, as well as our resources, don't enable us to do that in a way that we feel wouldn't inflict harm on those individuals.
Very good point. Thank you very much.
Great questions, Councilmember Fincher. Councilmember Voice.
Thank you, Madam President. Angela, great presentation. I had to step out for a minute. I might have missed it if you said it. So this is a huge lift, right? I'm just curious, what are your biggest concern as you move forward? What kind of keep you up and worry as we move forward this year?
Oh, my goodness. What doesn't keep me up? I'd say one of my big worries, imminent worries, I think, is not fully understanding the impacts of the expiring eviction moratorium. So thinking that that is coming up and then end of June and what that looks like. I think we need to be thinking about that at a state and regional level, but also at a more local level in our subregion and what that looks like. We have in South King County, you know, historically, a lot lower incomes in the region. We have a lot of people experiencing cost burden, paying a lot of resources toward their housing already, and that's all just been really compounded by the impacts of the pandemic. So I'd say that's one thing that's really on my mind, imminent, coming up. But I think one thing that kind of is more of that long-term keeps me up at night is really thinking about our affordable housing stock in South King County, and that's changing really rapidly as we see housing costs in South King County increasing at much higher rates than other areas of the region. So I think it's a challenge, but also an opportunity that we're in a place to really think about how to address that before we become completely unaffordable. So kind of, I guess, the short-term thing and a long-term thing that kind of keeps me up at night.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Well, you are the person for the job, so we feel good about that.
Thank you for the vote of council.
Councilmember Larmour, did you have your hand up? Oh, sorry. Yes. Angela, great presentation. I'm excited to see this work getting off the ground and knowing this is coming back for full approval and official approval later this summer. It's been a lot of work to get this geared up and really, really needed and valuable, and I look forward to it. But then also, it just remind me on the capital fund, the sources for that are going to be both 1590 and 1460, and then do we have other sources? Are we seeking private sources for funding as well, private partnerships?
Yeah, that's a good question. Right now, what we have formally committed to the Housing Capital Fund is the 1406, the sales tax credit funds. And I know some of our South King County cities that have passed the 1590, the one-tenth of one percent sales tax, are still considering where those funds are going and whether, you know, pooling it with SKIP, there's an opportunity there. And I think you all could better speak to this than I can. I think a lot of the cities in South King County are really kind of tackling and thinking about where those funds are going. So formally committed right now is the 1406 funds, and the 1590 is a little bit more of a question mark. But we will be looking at additional sources of funds. That's where I kind of talked a little bit about the SKIP 501(c)(3) and able to pursue philanthropic and other corporate investments, and those would be directly sought to supplement that Housing Capital Fund and really leverage our public resources.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Angela? Angela, I know you showed a slide on next steps. Can you just remind me when we can expect to hear information that you've gathered from, you know, questions that we've asked, but then from other councils?
Yeah, absolutely. So our SKIP Executive Board will be working on the development of the work plan, as well as the budget at their May and June meeting. So the earliest you would hear back from me would be July, and that's a little bit dependent on schedules, but it'd be like in the July to September range that I would be coming back with a But it'd be like in the July to September range that I would be coming back with a full work plan and budget for consideration.
Perfect. Thank you. And then in the meantime, we have your information if we have questions or any other feedback we'd like to provide.
Absolutely. Please don't hesitate to reach out if you have additional feedback for me on things that you would like to see prioritized or you have additional questions.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thanks so much for having me.
All right, we will move on in the agenda to our finance 2020 year end reports. So I would like to welcome Paula.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm excited to be here today to not only go over the 2020 year in review. So where did we end our year? But also to take some time to tell you how we've started off the first quarter of 2021. As well as kind of what's coming up with 2022. It's hard to believe that we're already thinking about that mid biennium budget adjustment. Michelle Ferguson has joined me today. Just so you know, she's running the PowerPoint and I am going to turn it over to her at some point during this presentation for her to share. I will tell you guys some of these slides that I'm going to go through. I'm going to go really fast because I have a lot of them in here. But we will make sure that you guys get them so you can actually see the reports as well. Real quick, I did want to give a big shout out to our financial planning team. That would be Kathleen McConnell and Shane Sorensen and being led by Michelle Ferguson. They've put a lot of work into getting these budgets together and these numbers together. So I'm very appreciative for everything that they do for us throughout the year related to budget. So, so let's go ahead and start kicking it off and start looking at where we're at, where we ended our 2020 financial report. Just real quick on the cash and investment side of the house. You're going to see we have four lines here from 2017 to 2020. Our cash and investment balance, this is a month to month view of it. You'll notice that pretty much every year, we have a pretty standard flow of cash each year. In 2020, it was our cash balances were just a little higher than they were in 2019. Next slide, please. And we have a couple of different ways, type, couple of different places we keep our money. So we do keep it in cash, which is going to be that kind of golden line that you see. That's been going down a little bit. We used to keep higher balances back in 2017. But the interest we earn from the cash we have on hand in our bank account is capped out at whatever our bank fees are. So we really don't want to keep more on hand than what we're going to need to pay in fees. You will see our local government investment pool has been increasing. And our, what's called other investments, that's our long term portfolio that's managed by PFM. It's been pretty consistent for the last three years. But as you may recall, we are in 2021 going to be looked to increasing those investments. In fact, we already have. We look forward to bringing that first quarter report to you guys on that. Next slide, please. All right, let's talk just a very little bit about debt. The next picture is one of my favorite pictures. Why is it my favorite? This is money we owe. And you can see that over the years, these payments that we're going to have to make are going down. And there will be an end to those. So I'm very excited about that. Looking at 2021, we have about $14 million in annual debt service that we'll be paying. But then after that, like I said, we're going to continue to gradually see those reduce. And you can kind of see where each of those debts are going to be paid off because you'll see a big drop in our payments. Next slide, please. So where is our outstanding debt? What is it all for? Who's going to be paying for it? You'll notice a big chunk of that is the Capital Resource Fund. They have $66.8 million that they'll be responsible for paying down with the water fund next at nearly $40 million. There are other amounts from the street fund, the sewer fund, and then all the other funds just kind of combined there in that green box. Next slide, please. General fund. General fund is really a fund that we spend a lot of time talking about. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about these funds. What I'm going to let you know is we're going to take two looks at our, the next several slides. We're going to be looking at how did we do compared to what we had in our amended budget? And how did we do based on the prior year's actuals? And actually, we're going to provide you with 2018 and 2019 actuals to compare with 2020. First and foremost, looking at our general fund revenues. You're going to see here that the 2020 actual for property tax came in at $31.4 million. It was higher than budgeted. This is something I brought to your attention a little bit early on in 2020 that we did notice that it was under budgeted. We actually did collect our 1% plus new construction. So that did fall in line with what we would have anticipated. The sales tax, looking at the budget, it was budgeted at $20.8 million. The sales tax, we purposely have under budgeted. So I want you to be mindful of that in 2020. So it did come in greater. But if you look at the actual compared to the budget. We brought in $27 million in sales tax the year before. Part of those numbers, why you're seeing a bit of change between 19 and 20 has to do with the annexation, which complicates matters with having comparables. So just something to be mindful of there. Utility tax, they did come in slightly under budget and under last year as well. By about 1.6% under budget. And BNO tax, that was really close to budget. Just came in just under budget at $14.78 million. Then you have all this other revenue and all the other revenue is made up of our licenses and permits, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, other governmental revenue and miscellaneous revenue. So there's a lot that falls into that bucket. We did see about for our, under the charges for services, these are things that we're generating in-house as a city. So about $2.6 million came in below budget related primarily to things like plan check fees and civil construction for at ECD. Some of our fire permit activities, plan review, excuse me, plan review activities also came in under budget at $1.3 million. Our rec fees, we know that our recreation programs have been closed down due to some of those restrictions that are there. And the revenues came in about $1 million under budget. We also had seen fines and forfeitures come in under budget as well. Those are those things that we would, revenue would be getting in from our courts. Some of our penalties for BNO tax, utility penalties, et cetera, would fall into that category. We did with our intergovernmental revenue, we did see our fuel tax come in about $152,000 below anticipated. But that was offset by about $216,000 increase in liquor tax. So people might not be driving as much, but they must be enjoying a little beverage in the evening, I'm guessing. And then miscellaneous revenues again were about $629,000 below what the budget was. Let's go ahead and go to the next page, please.
Paula, real quick. Overall, it doesn't look that bad. I'm more surprised with the cell tax. That seemed to be a lot higher than what we anticipate, but when you look at the bottom line.
Yeah, and it will be interesting, Councilmember Voice, for us to go look at actual to actual and see how the revenues came in year to year. We knew with the sales tax that it was under budgeted at the beginning of 2020. So we're not really surprised to see that coming in. Yes, I will admit probably at the beginning of COVID, for sure, taxes. We were anticipating seeing more of a reduction in some of these taxes than we're seeing now. But we actually saw a larger reduction in some of our other city generated revenues than we had anticipated. With the sales tax, I will say that I believe that the destination based sales tax really actually played in our favor this time. Where so often that has really harmed us because we're such a warehouse industrial city that when now people aren't going to the malls in another city, they're actually sitting at their computer and able to buy things and have them shipped to their homes and generating sales tax for the city.
Paula, I just have a quick question too about that side. So the BNO tax, is that because maybe a few businesses haven't paid up their BNO? Or what contributes to that? It's not much, but.
Yeah. Some of it is that we do have some, we have more than usual number of businesses who are actually on a payment plan for their BNO taxes. So that is delaying some of the receipt of these dollars. But we do have some, I can't give you an exact quote of how many that is. But yes, Councilmember, our Council President Troutner, that is a factor in that. All right, next slide, please. Now, this is interesting. We've shared something like this with you guys in the past. Typically, there's only two donuts on the screen. And what it does is shows, it used to show you what was the revenue for the five year period of 2010 to 2014? And then what was the five year period for 2015 to 2019? This time, we took the averages because I thought it would be interesting to get a look at how has things changed in our economy based on some of these averages? From some averages for the prior year compared to this year. And what we're going to find is in 2020, you'll notice that the construction element, it's gone up 2%. So it's now taking this orange here on the grid, the outer, the outer ring. This is 2020. You're noticing we're getting more sales tax in related to construction. Same with retailing. That's our yellow or golden color. We're getting 3% more than we were getting before. Things that have gone down, not surprising. Food services and dining places. They, they used to make up about 8% of this pie. Now they're, they're at 6% of the pie for the revenue coming in. And we also saw a decline in manufacturing and wholesaling as well.
Paula, what kind of industries would be the other?
The other activities, uh, let's see, boy, there's all kinds of industries under other. And thinking off of the top of my head.
Like services?
Yeah, that would be, it's really everything else. If it doesn't fall into one of those four categories, it would be everything else.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely services. And I do apologize, I don't have that list in front of me.
Oh, no worries.
Yeah, thank you.
Curious.
All right. Next slide. For utility taxes. So, okay, so we're doing the same sort of thing again here. And so again, the outside ring is 2020 compared to the average for these five year periods. And so what we're going to find is garbage is taking up more of that ring. It's up by 5%. Electric and gas down by 1%. And city utilities are up by 2%. Cable is the same as it was. Telephone is down. So let me explain a couple of these items here. First off, I'm going to start with telephone because telephone has been going down, but telephone really is not down that much. We did have an AR that was sitting out there for a company who had owed some telephone utility tax. It was based on an estimate. That estimate did get finalized and it came in lower than anticipated. So that's why you're seeing a drop there. So then that kind of skews some of these other percentages that you're looking at. So I do apologize for that, but that's kind of why you're seeing some of this activity. The other thing too is there's a lot of things that go into play when you're comparing from year to year. Remember, we're going back to 2010 in that inner circle, 2010 to 14. There have been changes in our utility tax rates over those years. And so you're going to see some of that vary based on the changes in utility tax rates. Councilmember Fincher, I see your hands up.
Thank you. So with telephone, you're looking at landlines, correct? Not the cell phones. Thank you.
All right. Next slide. Oh, next slide, please, unless someone else had something. All right, plans and permits. Okay. Interesting. Look at all of the building and structure permits in this blue. It's really taking up about half of our donut here. People are coming in. So the money that's coming in is primarily for construction that's been going on. What we're not seeing are as many new things coming in because you see these plan reviews are going down. Fire plan reviews going down. Street curb and other, which is this orange, also going down here. So this is kind of the genesis of how all of these revenues are coming in. Again, it doesn't mean that we're getting in more dollars. This is showing the percent. Because if you look over here to the right, the table's going to show you on average how much we're collecting for each of those. And Councilmember Fincher, did you have a question on this slide?
Oh, I can't hear you.
I just needed to lower the hand. Thank you very much.
Oh, not a problem. Not a problem. All right. All right, next slide, please. Okay, general fund revenue. Like I promised you, we started off by doing budget to actual. What did things look like? Now let's turn around and look at it from actual to actual. So we have 2018, 2019, 2020. The last column, what you're going to see is the percentage of change between, between 2019 and 2020. The almost middle column will show you the change between 2018 and 2019 as a percentage. You'll notice looking from 19 to 20, all areas of revenue within the general fund did decline. Our tax revenues, they were down by about $2.2 million. Part of that has to do with the fact that our annexation revenue went away. And with that, we were no longer receiving those additional annexation sales tax dollars that we had been receiving. And then in addition, the, sorry. In addition, the criminal justice annexation or criminal justice sales tax dollars related to annexation, that was also moved back to the criminal justice fund. So that's not necessarily a complete loss in revenue, reduction in revenue. It was a shift in revenue. And you'll see that when we look at the other funds. Our licenses and permits, they were down from 2019 to 2020, about $260,000. We did see intergovernmental revenue reduced by about $3.45 million. So in looking at that, there's a couple of things that go into play with that. In 2019, some of the streamlined sales tax dollars were recorded in the general fund before being shifted over to the Capital Resources Fund to be used for one time expenditures. The also impacting this number two is the fuel tax that was shifted back. So the state shared revenue that was shifted back from the general fund into the street fund. And that was that portion that was related to the annexation. We did see a reduction in charges for services for $4.3 million comparing 2020 to 2019. We did see a reduction in charges for services for four point three million dollars comparing two thousand twenty to two thousand nineteen. Um, we saw a big chunk of this, um, charges for services related to um, the permit center at two million dollars. Our parks department saw charges for services be reduced by about one million dollars. Fire uh, charges for services were down by about one million dollars. We did have find in forfeitures that were also down by about five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And um, then we had the interest and miscellaneous, so that's that bottom line there. It's down uh, quite a bit and that is really related to utility tax interest. Um, again, that has to do with that telecom um, invoice that we had to take care of. So part of that was that reduction. Um, also, we didn't have our typical um, off-duty officer program going this time. So there was not as much revenue to offset those expenditures. Or it wasn't expenditures either, but that, there wasn't the revenue. Same with the school resource officer. And then parks department was also down for their rentals, their senior trips, um, and food sales, et cetera. All right, next slide, please. So we've talked about the revenue, let's go ahead and take a quick look at the expenditure side of the house. So looking at salaries and benefits, again, we're starting off with looking at budget to actuals. When you begin to look at this, you're going to notice that within the general fund and all these categories, we did come in under budget. Salaries and benefits came in at about two point three percent under budget. This is in part due to saving, salary savings for some of the various departments. There were supplies that came in under budget as well. And services as well as transfers out. So there's a few transfers out that do happen, they were pretty close to budget. But there are some revenues that, there are some transfers from the general fund that would go to funds like the streets fund. But we only transfer the streets fund what it is they need. And so they didn't need the full amount budgeted by two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So therefore, that amount wasn't transferred over either. Next slide, please. All right, and so this slide is actually comparing those expenditures that we just saw on the other page to um, from year to year. And you'll notice from year to year that expenditures were down as well. Um, the uh, services and allocations, part of that is the result of the new cost allocation plan that came into place in two thousand twenty, um, where an additional two point four or five million was allocated out. And then, where does that leave the general fund? Let's go ahead and go to the next page. So in looking at this, this is our fund balance. So where did, where we ended, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty? And then the adjusted budget for two thousand twenty or the estimated budget for two thousand twenty-one. Um, if you look, we did um, have an ending or have a ending fund balance of in two thousand twenty of forty million dollars compared to the ending fund balance of thirty-two point six million dollars in two thousand nineteen. You're gonna find the two thousand um, twenty-one budget there was thirty-nine point two. That's really where we had anticipated, um, beginning the year. We did um, begin a little bit better than that. However, uh, those beginning balances haven't been updated in our system. So that's what you're seeing is that the final review into two thousand twenty-one has not been concluded to confirm that ending fund balance, but it is likely to be in that nearly forty million dollar range.
What percent is it at, Paula?
That would be um, at the forty million dollars, about almost thirty-nine percent, thirty-eight percent. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so now we have to talk about all the other funds. So, so we're gonna start with looking again at budget to actual. And we'll get a look at the actuals to actuals in a moment. But budget to actuals, looking at the two thousand twenty budget, you're gonna find that overall taxes came in over budget uh, by about four point seven million dollars. What I wanna say about that is, is there's a few things that come into play. We talked about the general fund and the fact that the general fund was receiving in some money that due to annexation that would became shifted back to their appropriate funds, that did play into this. In addition, um, we did have um, REIT revenues. With our real estate excise tax or REITs, we tend to budget that incredibly conservatively. And that is because it is very volatile. So because of that, we often come in over budget for our REITs. We don't increase it too much because to keep, to ensure that we are being really thoughtful and sound on how we're doing our budgeting, it is better to, to um, keep that budget a little bit low. Uh, we'll look to see how it compared year to year and you'll, you'll see where that difference is, but comparing it to budget. In addition, um, sales and use tax came in above budget, part of that being the same reason it's above budget in general fund. We did have um, uh, destination-based sales tax being applied, which did help the city. And utility taxes came in um, higher than anticipated per budget. Um, in addition, our licenses and permits, um, they came in under budget. This primarily had to do with the street, street use permits as well as the sewer permits. Our intergovernmental revenue also came in under budget, nearly two point two million dollars. Um, this is the result of the SST funding discontinuing um, last year. It also is the result of reductions in our fuel tax of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Fines and forfeitures also came in um, under budget. This is the result of decreased revenues in our school camera. Our school's own cameras can't collect revenues if schools aren't open and in session. And then also, um, uh, there was uh, an increase in seized asset proceeds. Or at least they came in above budget, excuse me. Next slide, please. So doing the year-to-year comparison really will give you a little bit more of an idea of what's going on with these revenues. But the, the bud, it'll at least provide you with a certain amount of trending that's going on. When we begin to look at overall taxes, you're gonna see they went down compared to two thousand nineteen by eight point eight percent in all of the other funds, again excluding general fund. This is re, um, because in two thousand nineteen, we actually had record-high REIT revenue um, of nine point five nine million compared to six point six two million in two thousand twenty. Um, licenses and permits were also down nineteen and a half percent. And this is due to a decrease in street use permits. The fines and forfeitures were up. And this was the result of red light cameras coming in one point six million dollars higher than the year before. Some of that has to do with the timing of when the lights were placed. How many lights were uh, placed, uh, the, or how many cameras, excuse me, were placed in two thousand nineteen compared to two thousand twenty? And uh, seized assets also came in higher than, than uh, the prior year by two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. But when comparing the, the school zone cameras, school zone cameras came in nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than two thousand nineteen. Next slide, please. All right, so this is um, now looking from the expenditure side of the house. And again, this is all other funds except for the general fund and it's looking from budget to actual. And what you're going to see, budget to actual, everyone did come in under budget in all categories of spending. Um, salaries and benefits were down one point five million dollars. Supplies and equipment were down by um, under budget, excuse me, under budget by two point six million dollars. Services and allocations were under budget by eleven point seven million dollars. And you'll notice transfers out, those ones are pretty close to budget, only being one percent, one and a quarter percent under budget. Next slide, please. All right, and now here we're comparing um, actuals to actuals. So if you look at the very last column in the table there, what you're going to find is that difference between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. And then the almost middle column is going to give you that variance between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Now granted, this is as a percentage. Um, overall, what you will find is that um, services and allocations for two thousand twenty, they were the, they, those and salaries and benefits were up compared to the prior year. Um, but you're going to notice that supplies and equipment were down compared to two thousand nineteen. Um, this is uh, several of the funds that have um, impacted that, that specific category of expenditure. Overall, when you begin to look at that, the total expenditures for two thousand nineteen were a hundred and eighty-five million dollars compared to a hundred and eighty, almost a hundred and eighty-four million dollars, so they were fairly close.
Why didn't salary benefit, yeah, we laid off quite a few people in two thousand twenty, yeah, still, still up a little bit?
Um, yeah, so a lot of the reductions that we did were in the general fund. So these would be all other funds except general fund. So what you're seeing is um, the increase for colas and benefits and stuff within that.
Not bad, I got it, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, next slide, please. All right, we're gonna talk just a little bit about capital. Really, I only have um, one page for capital and there is a lot on this one page, guys. So ultimately, just looking at the top graphic, that little bar chart up there, what it's showing you is how mu, how many dollars we actually spent in two thousand eighteen, nineteen and twenty for capital. It's broken out by streets, which is that golden rod, yellowish color on the screen. Um, sewer drainage, which is blue, parks, water, IT projects, and then all other projects. So, so that'll at least give you a visual. Now, when I look at that visual, I'm like, well, what's wrong with two thousand twenty-one? That doesn't look right if we spent all this capital dollars before. Well, in two thousand twenty-one, we are adding dollars to capital projects. Capital projects run inception to date, which means they may have received the money in two thousand twenty. But the spending of that money will occur in two thousand twenty-one, let's say. Projects tend to span more than one year. So this, the, when you see the two thousand twenty-one actual, it will look probably very different from that. That budget is only what new dollars projects were given. Um, the bu, the tables below will show you what the top ten projects were um, in uh, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty. And then kind of what, who received the most money, not necessarily spent yet. But who received the most money, what projects received the most money in two thousand twenty-one? So looking at two thousand twenty-two, I'm sorry, I'm getting close to the screen, my vision, it's really small print, sorry. Uh, you have the two hundred and twenty-eighth street grade separation, uh, fourth and Willis Roundabout, seventy-fourth road raising. Um, were your top four projects there, or top three projects there that were completed. Um, again, I'll send this out to you guys and you can get a closer look at some of those projects. And some of the projects that are coming, that were funded for two thousand twenty-one. All right, next slide. So I didn't spend a lot of time talking specifically about any one fund besides the general fund. But I think our liability fund needs, needs a little extra attention um, today during our presentation. I know that the risk manager has been sharing with all of you that market conditions, as well as our own experience, has been impacting the liability insurance world. I mean, our, from our perspective, our, our experience certainly impacts it. But what's going on in the world around us and in that market is also impacting that liability fund. So each year, we hire an actuary to um, come in and review all of our insurance funds. And what they do is they are doing a verification of, of uh, what we need, what we have and what we need for our fund, both currently and moving forward. So they do a lot of analysis. Now they're taking um, what's going on in the markets, what are, what are the trends in the markets? What are some of those outside influences that are, that are impacting um, some of that market? As well as kind, looking really closely at our own experience and saying, what do you guys need to do to ensure you have enough reserves set aside for any potential claims that could be coming through? So um, the, we got a report back late at the end of this year that talked about what we needed for the end of two thousand twenty, moving forward for our claims. The, there was definitely a jump in the claims reserves that would be required. When we do this, we actually have to hit our expenditure to be able to reserve those claims as a liability. So something that we owe or could potentially owe. And so there's known claims and there's unknown claims, which they call IBNR. And it's, it's the combination of those two things that really impact what we have to set aside. And then in addition to that, we do have a policy that states that we will maintain seventy percent confidence level. Um, that confidence level is based on what they're saying we need for claims as our fund balance. So in order to really get that liability fund where we need it to be, we need to fund the liability fund. Um, we were just talking about um, general fund fund balance and the fact that the general fund fund balance um, is actually ended the year higher than we had budgeted and anticipated. And um, it is neat knowing that the liability fund not only needs to be made whole to where we need to be today, which I'll tell you, we weren't at that seventy percent confidence level. We were trying to build up to it. Um, but with everything going on, it's been really a battle to catch it. But with the four, if we transfer four point four million dollars from the general funds, fund balance to that liability fund, that will not only fund the reserves that are required, but it will provide that fund with the seventy percent confidence level in its fund balance to be able to ensure that we have um, the dollars necessary to support that fund. Um, at least at this moment, we have anticipation and we are anticipating a forty to a fifty percent increase in premiums um, in two thousand twenty-two. And that will, once the actuary actually applies that into their formulas, into the, all of their calculations. I am not sure what that will, what impact that will have on our claims reserves requirement. But I will say that it's not likely to go down. Um, council member Fincher, I see your hand, is that?
Yes, thank you. So that seventy percent uh, confidence level, we were not there last year. So offhand, do you know the past three years, were we there, were we not there, and did that have an impact on our rates?
Um, so it actually doesn't have any impact on our rates, so I can start with that one. That one's an easy question. Um, I can say that I know for sure, council, um, council member Fincher, we haven't been there for sure the last two years, the two years I've been here, for sure, we have not been there. Um, and I'm guessing we probably weren't there prior to that. I honestly don't have those in front. I honestly don't have those in front of me, but if you'd like those numbers, I'd be happy to get them for you.
Thank you, Paula.
Yeah. And just so you know, the adjustment we did have to do did bring that fund balance down to negative for that fund. So we do need to definitely do something for it.
Paula, I'm looking at that um increase.
Mm-hmm.
That is huge. How do, how do we get out in front of that? Because I just, each year it goes up, but this seemed to be the biggest year that I've seen so far. Since I've been a councilman, I think that's something we need to probably try to get our hands around, because otherwise I don't it just seemed outrageous. And I understand that what happened and what took it there, but I, I don't know what the end goal is.
Yeah, um that is a very great point, council member voice, and I'll be the first to say I do know that um internally, we're trying to get our arms around it. There, there are so many external factors that are playing in to those items. Um market really has to do a lot with it, so that makes it really difficult for us to be able to control. Um internally, it's, it's, um you know, what, what is our experience? Our experience does play a role in that. Um and I know you've heard about some of that experience, like the risk manager has chatted with you guys about that, but um but it's that outside market factor that we can't control. I will say that um I, I um will work with uh Chris Hills, our risk manager, to um see if there is anything that he believes we can share that with you guys that would be useful to getting our arms around it. But again, when you have outside influences, that but does become very difficult.
And I get it, and I guess Madam President, I know uh the mayor and Derek's up there, but maybe going forward, I think maybe we need to have some serious conversation around this here. Just make sure we're all on the same page and understand, because it just, just seems so out of balance. And I get it, but it just seemed out of balance.
Yeah, um hey, uh uh the HR director, Terry Smith, is here in the audience, and I would love for her to be able to jump in and uh share her thoughts with us, Terry.
Great, thank you, Paula. It, this particular sub- subject is um really a sore spot um for Chris and I um simply because of the, the hardening of the market due to all of the increased claims. Um and and as Paula said, it's our experience, but it's the external um experience around us um that are creating, creating those increases. Um another area we can look at um to help with the increase in premiums doesn't necessarily help um the bottom line, but that would be an increase in our self-insured retention. Um so you're probably going to be seeing that coming forward as well. Um so there's still going to be some big increases in the premiums, but I also believe our self-insured retention um is going to increase, not only for the liability fund, but also I believe for the uh workers' comp fund. So it's, it's just, as Paula said, it's a lot of um external forces as well as just our internal experience um is driving this. And it, it makes, makes for some sleepless nights sometimes.
And I appreciate that, Terry, and I, and I know we are self-insured, and I get that, right? So I know we kinda, I think we looked previously outside to go another pool type thing. I think we found the self-insure was a lot cheaper. I'm assuming that's still probably the case today.
It is, um and we do have a lot more control over our own claims versus, you know, the pooling. Um sometimes it's helpful, um you know, until one of those others in the pool have a really large uh claim experience. Um but I do know that Chris is also looking at um some other types of uh insurance um ideas. Because again, this, this increase is um astronomical. I don't think we've seen numbers uh anticipating numbers as high, probably in, you know, the twenty-plus years that Chris has been doing this.
You know, a couple of years like this, it's not gonna be good.
Oh, it's not, and, and just finding insurers um is going to be more challenging. And as you have more and more levels of insurance, you know, I think we might have, gosh, I know we've got four, we might even have five levels of insurance now. And um it's just getting more and more difficult. Some of those insurance layers are even shared by different insurers. You know, that's how much they're trying to um alleviate their own uh potential payouts. Because where, in years past, you know, the third and fourth layers rarely ever paid out. Well, now we're seeing the claims getting into those layers.
Yeah, and we're probably not gonna solve this tonight, but maybe I still, sometime down the road, maybe, I think all of us probably just need to kind of, at least for me, I understand, just sort of better. And make sure we understand, you know, where we going forward to, right? Because like I said, a couple of years like this here, it's probably not gonna be good for either of us, so, but thank you very much, appreciate it.
You bet. All right, any more questions on this before we move to the next, I, the next screen? All right, next page. So what did we learn about uh how we did in two thousand twenty? Well, overall, our tax revenue for two thousand twenty came in better than we had anticipated, and truly, that is great news. Um we did recognize more significant revenue losses in other, in other areas um that, that we hadn't necessarily planned for. Um the one thing that the city did, which um really did leave the general fund in a good space related to its fund balance, was take swift action for, to address those anticipated revenue shortfalls. Um and then departments really did a fantastic job staying under budget, um even beyond the reductions that we took um in two thousand twenty. So that is our recap for the two thousand twenty year, and so what I'd like to do is turn it over to Michelle for a moment. She can walk you through the March financial report.
Oh, real quick, I'm sorry, Paul, what are our, our reserve balance, and did you show, where do we end up at? The, the reserve balance, did you show that?
In the general fund?
No.
We ended at nearly forty million dollars or thirty, almost thirty-nine percent.
Okay, all right, and, and this is, our policies say eighteen, right?
Yeah.
We will go to over.
Yeah, and then if we were to take out the four point four million dollars from fund balance, let's say at the end of two thousand two, that will lower our um reserves by that four point four million dollars or down to thirty-five point six million dollars. Um and then change that um percentage based on the actual, or based on the expenditures down to, I think, thirty-five percent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, good afternoon. Um I will be presenting a quick overview of the March monthly report. There's not a lot of surprises this early in the year, but I will go through the report and kind of highlight any funds or categories that may seem a little off of the budget target or the year-to-year comparison. So um as we talked about before, the sales tax revenues um have been highlighted at the bottom of this slide. So we stopped receiving the sales tax annexation in June of two thousand twenty, which was about, came into about four hundred and fifty thousand a month. So if we compare sales tax, sales and use tax, um the revenues are coming in at about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a month higher than they were at this time last year. If we're excluding annexation and just looking at sales and use, we are seeing quite a higher increase, and it's about three hundred and twenty thousand a month higher than we did in two thousand nineteen. Um and then when we look at the utility tax revenues um at the top of the chart, you'll see that they are coming in lower than they were in two thousand twenty. If you recall, during the twenty-one, twenty-two budget process, we updated how the internal utility tax is receded. So by ordinance, thirty point seven seven percent of the internal utility tax is dedicated to the capital resources fund. Historically, this portion of the tax is receded into the general fund and then transferred to the capital resources fund. So now this portion of the revenues are receded directly into the capital resources fund, and that's why you're gonna see about, on average, a hundred and thirty thousand less per month in utility taxes in the general fund. So the city is still receiving the same amount overall, it's just less than the general fund revenues, but also less than the expenditures. Um under other taxes, um those consist mostly B and O revenues and some admissions and gambling tax revenues. The revenues through March are actually showing a negative amount, and that's because of the combination of two things. There were some refunds that were issued this year for prior years, as well as some accruals that are done during the first quarter that led to that negative amount. So the due date for two thousand twenty B and O revenues go through the first quarter into April of two thousand twenty-one. So even though those revenues were received in two thousand twenty-one, they get moved back to two thousand twenty. Um the April revenues are, have already come in, and I've seen those, and um there's no longer a negative balance, and we've gotten more than we did the year before, so everything's okay now. Um in the other revenues category at the bottom of the chart, there's a large uptick in revenues in March. And although the city is starting to see slight increases in some of the other revenue categories, like licenses and permits and charges for services, this large increase um had nothing to do with those. It was actually because we transferred in um two million dollars um of public safety payroll costs that were being reimbursed with CARES funding from the prior year, and so that's what that extra uptick was for. So on this slide, um we've already talked about the revenues on the previous one, so I'm gonna focus on expenditures. Um under fire contracted services, you'll see that there's a negative amount, and that's due to a timing issue with the monthly amount that gets paid to the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority on a monthly basis for the services they provide for us. Um that's been corrected. Um and then the negative amount is because of the accruals that we do during January and February that accrue the expenditures back to the prior year. So all of that has been corrected in the April, you'll see a normal amount in that line. IT and public works are highlighted in blue, and that's just to show you that those were expenditures related to annexation. And since we no longer have that anymore, you will not see any more expenditures for ongoing for those two categories. Um and non-departmental is significantly lower than it has been before, and this is due to the utility tax and how we receipt it now. So now we don't have those revenues and we don't have the expenditures, so it's not because of anything weird, it's just how we're doing things now. Um so to highlight a couple of the different funds that may look a little bit weird right now, um the lodging tax, that's just because of uh the effects of COVID nineteen, that we're seeing that negative forty-three percent variance. So pre-COVID revenues were about eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars a month, and since COVID, they're down to around eleven thousand dollar a month that we're seeing for those revenues. Um the criminal justice tax revenues are also down, and they're down about sixteen percent from two thousand twenty. And this is mostly due to the decrease in school zone cameras. These cameras have been turned back on, so we should be seeing the revenues kind of climbing in the next few months. Um this revenue loss is being partially offset by the criminal justice sales tax annexations that we're going that are going back to fully into the criminal justice fund. A portion was in the general fund, and so overall, the criminal justice fund will receive an additional nine hundred thousand dollars a year instead of the general fund, and that's about seventy-five thousand dollars a month. Um on this slide, I've highlighted the golf complex because the expenditures are uh have a very high variance compared to two thousand twenty, and um this is due to funds being transferred from the golf operating fund into the driving range project and the golf irrigation systems upgrade project, so one-time transfers. And for our last slide, um workers' compensation has been highlighted, and this is a variance that's just due to a timing issue with the allocation. We're doing that allocation a little bit differently, and the March allocation did not make it in time for closing, and it's now been updated, and so next month, you shouldn't see a variance this large anymore.
Any questions? Thank you, Michelle, anyone have any questions on this? All right, not seeing any hands raised. All right, so it's hard to believe we're already gonna start talking about two thousand twenty-two mid-biennium budget adjustment. So um just real quick, we already have, have started to compile of list, next slide please, a list of things that we know we're gonna have to look at as we go to the mid-biennium budget adjustment. So House Bill fifteen ninety, revenues and expenditures. We um now are getting that um sales tax that is allowed from House Bill fifteen ninety, ninety. I know we chatted about that at the council retreat uh just earlier this month. And um as part of the two thousand twenty-two budget that was put together, we had only put a portion of those revenues and expenditures in the budget. So those were those things that through all of our workshops, we had added a few things to the budget. Youth behavioral health, et cetera, those were added, everything else not. So we'll be, we'll be addressing that as part of that adjustment. The other thing we want to do is take a look at our sales tax revenue. We did notice last year it came in better than expected. So far this year, it's been coming in better than expected. So we're gonna wanna take some time to look at that, see if that's something we wanna adjust in the mid-biennium budget adjustment. Also, um salary and benefit adjustments. Um for the two thousand twenty-two budget, we did anticipate a two and a half percent increase in salaries related to um a projected CPI. We did just last week um receive the April CPI number, and that number was at three point seven percent. We base our number off of June CPI, so we'll wait to see how that comes in. Not sure, higher, lower, how that will fall, but it is definitely so far higher than what we had budgeted originally um for the two thousand twenty-two fiscal year. The other thing we want to look at are the frozen positions. There were some positions that we did freeze as part of the um budget reduction exercise that we did last spring. So um the potential for, for um unfreezing those or some of those, as well as increasing um a budget for equity expenditures. I mean, these would be items like interpreters, um bringing back the speaker series or adding budget for additional speaker series. Um participatory budgeting balancing act um or other expenditures that um may be needed based on um the work that's being done this, with our equity manager on that strategic plan moving forward, so seeing what comes from that. There are, um the, there is the central cost allocation that will need to be updated. So the central cost allocation, that would be administration, finance, HR and law. Those costs, department costs are allocated out to departments receiving the services based on their usage. And it is updated to, uh it is updated to reflect actual numbers from two years prior. So now that we've closed two thousand twenty, we'll have updated numbers to know how much of those expenditures can be allocated out. So we will be having to adjust that as part of the two thousand twenty-one, or excuse me, two thousand twenty-two mid-biennium budget adjustment. Um the other things that we'll be looking for is um li- the liability insurance. We just chatted about that, we're waiting to see what happens with the next actuarial study, what happens with our premiums. Um the same with property tax insur- or property insurance, that's another one that may be going up. And as Terry just mentioned early, the potential of workers' comp. So all of our insurance funds um will be looked at um as part of that adjustment to, mid-biennium adjustment, to see what we would need to do about those.
Hey Paula, I understand the frozen position. Uh do you know, uh we lay people also, is that part of the equation too, to look at bringing some of the headcounts back, or that's totally separate?
That would be totally separate, because the frozen positions are positions that we had intended not to get rid of. And I think that is what we need to look at as we're going through this process. Can we unfreeze those positions? Which is a very different conversation than undoing things that, decisions that were made um in the spring.
Do we know the, based on what we did in the spring, are we looking at bringing some of the people back? Or we gonna kind of stay stable where we at?
Um right now, we are staying stable with where we're at. I think that we just uh need to get some projections. Um, right now, we are staying stable with where we're at. I think that we just uh, need to get some projections going. In fact, we're gonna, if, if Michelle wants to jump to the next screen, um, Councilmember Boyce, I'll address this as well. We have some things we have to look at before we can start looking at really what we're going to do. We do know the items that were on the last slide are things we have to address um, and look at first and foremost. But there's still a, a wide variety of things that have to be looked at, looked at as far as forecasts, both on the revenue. And expenditure side of the house. Um, and that will at least give us an idea to make decisions to move forward with the budget adjustment.
And we still use the internal process when uh, people leave, that, that they have to go through a process with their, in a team before they. Post, we still doing it, is that process still in place?
So, um, is your question, can, can you repeat your question instead of me trying to guess what you said?
Internal, Derek making answers, so on the internal process for us, when uh, we put a process in place, so when people leave. We just don't automate it harder, the process to go through before thumbs up, that's still in place, Derek?
Yes, it is. They, the department has to work with HR and submit a requisition that goes up the chain for approval. So, yes, each uh, request to fill a vacancy is reviewed.
Do you see that standing in place for a while?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, Derek, for jumping in and answering that one. Um, so the mid-biennium budget process, we are actually just on the heels of really um, moving forward with this. So right now, um, we're starting today, just kind of introducing it to you guys as part of this workshop. We are going to be reviewing um, forecasts throughout the month of May. We do want to set um, as part of the council workshop. Um, an opportunity to sit down with council and talk about the mid-biennium budget adjustment priorities. And that would be happening on June fifteenth. And then we will kick off our citywide budget um, meeting. Our budget kickoff meeting will happen on June seventeenth. And so, in the meantime, we'll have June and July to review. For departments to review their baseline and really what their needs are. Um, we're gonna be also during June and July looking at the capital improvements um, plans. So departments will do their work um, on those plans for June and July, and then it would be reviewed. Um, uh, they'll review funding forecast, and that's gonna be on finance in July. And then also um, looking at the uh, making any updates needed for the two thousand twenty-two funding list. Uh, we do um, have an ELT retreat um, that will hold in August. To be able to review and balance that budget, um, with the intent of getting the mid-biennium budget update. Um, out to council by the end of September, September twenty-eighth. Um, of course, we have our regular public hearings, and then uh, we will have our deliberations with council. We have several workshops um, already scheduled um, for uh. Uh, I, um, to, to work with council to, to go over those budgets. And then um, hope, hoping that at the operations and safety committee meeting on November second. We can um, share that um, amendment and adopt it on the council meeting on November sixteenth. It's a pretty tight timeline, um, but that's kind of the direction that we're headed with this. Are there any questions about that? Alright, that was all that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paula, and I think you said you will get that uh, the presentation that we've seen tonight to council.
Yes, I'll get that sent out to you tonight.
Wonderful, and then if anyone has any additional questions, go ahead and follow up with Paula.
Uh, Madam President?
Yes.
You know, I uh, you know, I'm really amazed about the work that our county department does. I mean, it just really, it make my head hurt, right? I mean, I, I understand the high level with all the detail, I can imagine what you guys go through. And uh, just, you know, kudos to you, Paula, for your leadership and your team uh, as a council. We really appreciate that, so. And thanks for sending the document out. We'll take a closer look, but I, I'm just really pleased. That you're leading, so kudos to you and your team, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Well said, Councilmember Boyce. Um, you have an amazing team, Paula. Um, and we really appreciate all the time that you guys take to come before us and present information, so we can ask questions and understand what's happening.
Thank you.
Alright, with that, we have come to the end of our agenda, and we are right on time. So, councilmembers, you have about thirty minutes um, to take a little break, and we will see you all back here at seven PM. Thank you, everybody, we are adjourned.